... June 21st, 2021. Definitely. I'll drop here.
Trusty Mahoney. Here. Trusty Andreessen.
Here.
Trusty Kunsy.
Here.
Trusty Burton. Here. Trusty Sagnano. Here. And President Lyman.
Here. I came with you all right.
Introduce to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the ideal with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so our first item on agenda or the public comment on agenda items only. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board on agenda items only?
We have Tom Roper.
Okay, wonderful.
Next trustee Scott Andreessen has lied to me. And now he is lying to you. Or he is the beast exaggerating the truth. I sent her on a letter that I might be reading supposed to be about me. His actions are inappropriate for someone who you would consider for other sensibilities. In prior board meeting, he told you that the dust on his car was so bad that he had to rewatch it. He accused the animal parking lot, which I own, as the culprit. Additionally, he said he has received many complaints from others. None of the local businesses are out here and none of one of them complained or said anything about the dust from that lot. Recently, I received a citation for creating a public nuisance. I believe Scott Andreessen accusing the village of retaliating against me. During the election, I sent a letter to the residents. In retaliation, Scott posted a "As a Village trustee." And at that time, he was. Escaped a personal attack on me. It's too vague if you can read it. In that letter, he also said that he's constantly cleaning his home and office due to the empty animal lot. Do you believe him? I wash the windows of the animal club maybe twice a year. You think I would let them have dirty windows? He's lying to you. And you've made enough stuff to retaliate against me. And you're supporting me. I think it is irresponsible for this board to support a person who attacks a major investor, a local business owner who is such a visceral passion. And he's either exaggerating or he's lying to you. He didn't even want this job. And I think he didn't run because I don't think people would elect him. We talked to some people in town. What do they think about him? He does not have broad community support. I question his character and so should you. Now, Board President Lyman has presented to you viable candidates. Your role is advice and consent. The Board President deserves your support when he presents qualified candidates. As the viable candidate is presented, that consent should not be withheld out of political hands.
I would ask that CNN, we have so many people here, if we move the remainder of the public comment on agenda items up to the front, it's become a state. We have a pretty long agenda then.
I would second that. Trusty Mahoney.
Yes.
Trusty Andreessen.
Yes.
Trusty Kunsy.
Yes.
Trusty Burton. Yes. Trusty Sagnano. And Trusty Triger.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board on agenda, non-agenda or non-agenda items?
Pride of the Fox organization. Lindsay McGrath Holmes and David Rich. Hello, thank you for having us tonight. We're here on behalf of Pride on the Fox. We had an amazing event this past weekend. And we would like to just talk a little bit about that. As she mentioned, I'm Lindsay McGrath Holmes. This is David Rich. We are members of Pride of the Fox and we're here to speak on behalf of our organization.
So Pride on the Fox is a nonprofit group here in Dundee. And it employs six individuals that organize and coos the Pride event each year. This year's event marks four years of celebrating Pride in Dundee. And it's been our most attended event. It also marks the first time we had serious pushback and perceived discrimination against our members. We are not named, so this was not unexpected. We were, however, disappointed for the negativity to come from such a high-ranking public official like the village president. At Pride on the Fox, we envision a space where regardless of sexual orientation, identity, or creed, we can come together to celebrate not only our differences, but most importantly, celebrate our commonality as members of human race. We create community amongst LGBTQ+ individuals, families, and allies, while generating awareness of issues and promoting support. We help fundraisers that have benefited organizations such as the Dundee Crown High School of Cancer Alliance and the LGD Crisis Center. Saturday, June 19th, our team prepared and decorated the East Dundee Depot for our family-friendly park crawl with businesses from both the west and east Dundee participating and supporting the event. We had 200-plus people show up, from kids under the age of five to adults over the age of 80. Our community was diverse. We created a place for LGBTQ+ individuals in our community to come celebrate their true authentic selves and not feel the full of discrimination, if only for a few hours.
On that day, East Dundee village president Jeff Lyman showed up early in the day when there were several children present and tried to stop our event. When he approached us, he was not friendly, professional, or welcoming. His first words were, "Who gave you permission to put these flags up here?" While the president of our organization was trying to locate our proof of approval, Mr. Lyman continued to say that we had no business being there and we failed to obtain appropriate authorization for the event. Pride on the Fox submitted an appropriate request to rent the depot and pay all necessary fees. Our check was cash for the village of East Dundee on June 9th. Mr. Lyman continued to harass multiple members of our organization and question the pride flags that had been hung, even after we assured him we had all the necessary approvals. As he continued to try to stop the celebration, we verbally assured him one final time that our event had been approved by the village board and he boldly stated, "I am the village board and I did not approve this event." At this point, we produced an email chain proving that we had all the necessary approvals, that funds had been collected, and that police patrol would be at the depot. We then proceeded to highlight the fact that Pride on the Fox has the support of many local businesses and that this celebration was bringing upwards of 200-plus people to the town. These are businesses we all know well and that have likely just endured one of the hardest 16 months of their lives, both professionally and personally. Mr. Lyman continued to give us a hard time and weird even after we showed the confirm approved email. Eventually, a community member who was bringing her granddaughter to perform for our pecan twirling club and also knew Mr. Lyman was a family friend, requested for him to leave the depot and to take it easy on our group. At this time, if there is not an appropriate method within the village that provides communication about approval of events, then we are here to ask the board to work together to create this process or educate those who are unaware of the process. We would like to say our sincerest thank you to the trustees of the East Dundee Board who do support not only our organization, but were there to support our event as well. The celebration was beautiful. The community was happy. And the local businesses had one of the most profitable days they had seen in over a year. The depot was left spotless. We had smiles on our faces and love on our hearts. We led with love because love always wins. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Yes. Is this open?
Hello, my name is Craig Anderson. I lived in East Dundee for 18 years. Lived in this area for over 36. First, let me thank you for running and becoming city trustees. A lot of work and I do appreciate that. Certainly committed to the community. I think commendable that you're willing to put in the time, the information, learn, the intricacies about the business of this city to keep an eye on the government first. But I needed to assure a concern of mine about our past administrator Jennifer Johnson. After loomming about the administration's cost of our town of 3,000 citizens, about the same as a town that's 10 times the size of our city. I wonder whose best interest it would be to serve. It's good to know that East Dundee's turnaround was all about due to the town's past administrator. Putting East Dundee in good fortune has more to do with the past policies than a reported motion years ago. It's like saying she drove the train so she should be credited with building railroads. It's not true. The tracks have been laid down long ago. Unfortunately, you have learned about our past administrator's personal and professional choices. Without going into the details, her choices have been risky at best. For herself first, before our town, it showed to be incredibly disruptive to her and our town. I urge you to stay with determination. Put this mess behind us. Find the best way to move this town forward. Being a small town, we must continue thinking about growth. But it must be done in a more effective, efficient way. Saving money is good. President Lyman has been elected because of his focus on growth. Being an accountant, he has good ideas. He understands the numbers. East Dundee can be managed more cost-effective. Please keep the interest of our citizens first and thank you for that.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? I've seen none. Good day. Can you take us to our consent agenda? I could have a consent agenda.
I'll make a motion on consent agenda. Item A, motion to approve a special village board meeting minutes dated June 7th, 2021. Item B, motion to approve the release of certain executive session meeting audio files dated April 12th, April 19th, April 26th, May 3rd, and May 10th, all in year 2021, to trustee Kunsy. And item C, reappoint Gerald R. Bell, and associates as village engineer.
I'll second. Okay, I just want to add to though that for item B, I'll be instructing our clerk to go ahead and take one and to transcribe those notes of the minutes, I should say. Really doesn't seem to be a responsibility or hassle of doing that. So that's actually the job of clerk.
I think there's some inconsistency that might not be appropriate for the clerk.
There's definitely one of them because that's her job. So I'm not instructing her to do that.
And clerk is not part of the executive session of trustee Kunsy's work, which is why we have trustee Kunsy.
But whatever the issues were at the time, they've been removed and so she can handle that, I think, in a more efficient manner. So.
Well, hold on. You didn't make the motion. Sorry, I don't know your motion.
Well, no, I'm not amending the motion. I'm just telling you that what I'm going to do is instruct clerk to handle that item instead.
Even though the board, for a very specific reason, want a trustee Kunsy to do the transcribing and we are going to vote on that now.
True enough, Scott, I understand. But what I'm telling you is that it's not an item that's appropriate for a trustee to handle. And it is part of clerk's job. And at the time, there were some sensibilities that had to be taken into account regarding to the issues that were being discussed in the executive session. And so therefore, we went ahead and dismissed or relieved, if you will, the clerk from attending. The situations that were surrounding that trouble, if you will, or that strike has been removed. And so now the clerk can go ahead and do this and that's.
But that's a board decision, not yours.
Okay. But I'm telling you right now, I'm going to instruct the clerk to do it, Scott.
So you're going to facilitate instructing clerk against the board motion.
So in that case, we need someone to amend the motion. And I'm not going to amend my motion.
Okay, I won't. I'll amend the second. Okay, that's fine. Kathleen, move the roll.
Trusty Mahoney.
Yes.
Trusty Andreessen.
Yeah, yes.
Trusty Kunsy.
Yes.
Trusty Burton. Yes. Trusty Sagnano. Yes. Trusty Triger.
Yes. Okay, brings us to other agenda items. The first one is presentation by Illinois State Representative Suzanne Ness.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Suzanne Ness. I am the new lifeblood state representative for the 66th district, which covers most of East Dundee as well as other parts. And I'm here tonight to introduce myself to members of the board and also to let you know of some exciting news. When I took my office, I knew that I was going to get to be able to do a lot of wonderful things, meet people, work on problems, and hopefully find resources that would benefit our communities. And so as part of that role, in a discussion with the new village president, Mr. Lyman, I found out that there is a goal to want to create a municipal parking garage, which knowing the area as I do, I've been a member of the Chamber of Commerce here for a number of years, I know how much this community, how vibrant it is, the people that it attracts, the traffic that it attracts, and the benefit of having something like parking, because even tonight I have a kind of fun vision. So it would be good to know. So in that way, I was able to appropriate half a million dollars, $600,000 towards the construction of municipal parking garage for East Dundee. So I'm excited to see that happen and be completed and to continue to host wonderful facilities like the one we heard about earlier. So I'm sure to do that. Thank you. Maybe the future.
Yes.
Okay. Maybe the trustees, if you're going to take a couple of. I know it's a little tight, so maybe I'll probably do that just. I was on the county door. We used to do this for me, so.
Trusty, please. Any chance of this evening disappearing?
One, two, three. All right. Thank you very much.
We're learning more about this. We're learning more about this municipal park.
Well, this is a real big win for the village and for the trustees, our whole board. I'd just like to again thank Representative Ness for the help she's lent. It's going to go a long way to alleviating some of the problems that we've had for some time now. And I really look forward to working with her in other capacities. And thank you again, really. Just can't be more appreciative. Okay. Great job. Thank you. All right. So that would take us to item B. If I could add a motion.
I will motion to disapprove the rule of village administrator Jennifer Johnson by the village president and the floor Jennifer Johnson to bill the office of village administrator to third floor of the third floor.
I'll second. Okay, I would just like to begin this discussion to let the board know that I've been contacted by the Illinois County Risk Management Trust, who is our liability carrier, as well as the Illinois City Managers Association. And the Risk Management Trust is initiating an investigation into the lawsuits that have been communicated our way and have been initiated by Ms. Johnson and the situation that is surrounding her dismissal. And I would deem it prudent, most prudent on this board's part, that we should hold off until that investigation has been completed before acting on this item. We certainly can table it and bring it back at that time. But to act at this point would be premature. And so I would say just suggest that we go ahead and let that investigation on its course.
The only issue with that statement is that we don't have village administrator. And what we do technically is you. You've made yourself village administrator, hiring a village administrator.
And a lot of us.
Let me finish. A lot of us view that as a conflict of interest.
It is.
And so, you know, we feel we're forced back to make this motion. Because we've had time now to appoint a temporary person into that position and have not done.
And I think the situations that you are referring to on the part of the former administrator have only been facilitated by the fact in the actions that you took unilaterally, without knowledge of everybody else on this board, without a plan of how to fill in and how to have a continuation of business as normal. So that's where I'm having a hard time.
And I could appreciate that. The situation actually was immediately followed the dismissal of Jennifer Johnson. The assistant village administrator Brad Mitchell was by ordinance to fill in as acting administrator. He was then given some days later a differentiation, if you will, of the deputy administrator role as opposed to an assistant village administrator's role. And when that clarification came through, it indicated that based on the assistant village administrator's role, he was not to be bound to take over as village administrator, which left us without a village administrator. As a result, the village president was to step into that role. And I can tell you now, I have put in more hours since that has been communicated to me than I ever did in the 30 hours I was with Allstate Insurance Company. I have done everything that I absolutely can do and looking right now actively, I've already received several resumes from the GovTemp and HRUSA of GovHRUSA. And I'm ready to appoint somebody. I can do that within five minutes if that's what the board chooses or if that's, you know, what you want me to do. What I'm trying to do is find somebody who can do this for us in the most efficient way. Now, the person who's going to be doing this on a temporary basis may or may not be the long-term village administrator. Regardless, the person who does do this for us on a temporary basis, if you will, is going to be more than qualified. And there's an awful lot that goes into it. And I, you know, I can tell you right now that in order to be able to handle all aspects of village management, it takes quite a bit of knowledge. It does. I have learned quite a bit as part of the process. So I'm not sorry that I filled in this role. But I am able to go ahead and put in someone to take this place, to take this role and hold the wheel until I can rate qualified candidate for your approval based on advice and consent. I will then, of course, once I get to that point, that person will be appointed. The board will take over and decide to give your name. And then if not, we'll go to another individual.
Well, if the board overturns the termination, that makes an appointment essentially impossible because it would be basically vacating the termination. My concern here is a number of reasons. First and foremost, the way the termination was handled, there was no thought given that like ongoing operations in the village. Second of all, it was clear, I mean, we're not going to do our leaving that night. Second of all, you know, the portion of the law that was used was essentially an emergency termination provision. And I don't know that having nine weeks of advance notice constitutes an emergency under any circumstances. Third, you know, the reasons that were read to us, of which despite my verbal and written request for a copy, I've still not received, the reasons that were listed for the termination, or in my opinion, unpersuasive at best, maybe factual at worst. And at the end of the day, I just don't think any level of the termination is handled properly.
One of my concerns as far as due diligence is that it happened so quickly that you didn't even realize that Brad could not take on the role. I feel like if the homework was done, you would know at that point that he could or couldn't have stepped into that role. So that's where I feel my concern is rash decisions unilateral. Could have been discussed, we could have known, he could have stepped in.
And that's a valid point. The only difference is that there wasn't anything precluding from Brad Mitchell from taking on that role. He chose not to. Sent out an email to the village board and to the village hall of all the staff that said, "I'm not your guy. I'm disconnecting from this whole process. If you have any issues, send them to President Lyman because now he's your acting village administrator." This was an unexpected reaction on part of Mr. Mitchell and I'm really disappointed in the way he handled it. However, I did not, there was nothing that would have led me to understand or believe prior to making the decision that he was going to take that decision.
But that's what I have to clarify.
No, it doesn't, Scott. There was every reason for me to believe that Brad was capable. He's the assistant village administrator. If he doesn't have the chops to do the job right out of the gate and the absence of the village administrator, then we have another discussion that now for us.
Can we rephrase because there's a difference between willingness and ability? And you are not differentiating between the two.
Well, the willingness was only communicated to me over the last few days. And so it's like, well, how am I supposed to know that he wouldn't have been willing until I was made aware of it? Once I was, I mean, at that point, all I did was come to the village hall every day and step into the role and make sure that I could handle or could be of service to every one of the department heads and employees in whatever capacity that took.
Well, had you not been given a special law meeting solely for purposes of having a conversation about the possible termination or possible retention of village administrator, these are all things that could have been discussed, you know, how do we keep the village operations moving forward? Are there concerns that we need to address?
And the way we would do that would be to get a recruiting process.
The way we do this is we talk to the board before you make a unilateral decision to fire somebody, which was outside of your fore.
As well as get appropriate removal letters from our village attorney instead of something that you're planning yourself.
Right.
That would protect the village and the village's interest.
That's exactly what I was doing, Trusty Mahoney. I was absolutely acting 100% in the best interest of the residents of East Dundee and my neighbors and to make sure that we were covered and to make sure that they were protected from the risks that were being presented to them. And what this board is suggesting right now is that they are going to bring back the person solely responsible for bringing those risks to their door. I'm not going to stand for it.
And I believe that you believe that you're doing things in the best interest of the village. That doesn't make it such.
Okay, fine.
Number one. Number two, I want to thank you for the time and effort you've been putting in last week with the staff so that liquor licenses can get approved by the due date that they need to be approved by, payroll can be put through, all of the invoices can be put full. Right, all that good stuff. It needed to happen. And I'm glad that the staff was and you were able to keep that going. However, I don't doubt that caused a little bit of stress on your part in the unknown and learning and the learning curve of all of this. So that just goes back to the fact of, to your point, I agree with you. We need to have people that are trained, knowledgeable, and have experience to run this town. Yes, we are a small town, but we have complicated areas. We've got a lot of big business deals that are coming through that we need to make sure that we have somebody that is in that role, that knows how to put the deals together, knows how to run the business, knows how to run the staff compassionately and correctly of 32 people in this village.
33 more.
Staff. So I'm also concerned that news of this comes to light after nine weeks of us pushing on. What are you going to do? What are you going to do? It doesn't come to light until the agenda item is added to the agenda on Saturday. Then we hear about you, that you work on it. So there's this reactionary, this reactionary, keeping it close to your best. We are a team here. We need to build trust. And when you start doing stuff like that, trust is not built.
Absolutely. And I 100% agree with you, but not to go into any sort of tit for tat, Kathleen. This item that we're talking about right now was added on a Saturday, like 48 hours before this agenda came out. And I think it's only fair for the residents of this town that they get as much notice as possible. And so. And so, when you're going to tell me that I'm going to, you know, torpedo something or I'm going to backdoor something and put it on the agenda at the last minute, well, I haven't done that. But we have seen instances of that. So, and I could not agree with you more in your assessment of the...
And you did, you did exactly the same thing at the last meeting. You added something to the agenda and changed something on the agenda forty-eight, just right before the deadline.
Right, and it was pointed out to me that it was on there appropriately.
And again, my point about trust, my point about trust and working openly and collaboratively with the team that you have here, that's what we're asking.
And you got it. I am absolutely more than one hundred percent willing to do that. What I am telling you, though, is that there are some instances and there are some issues that are coming before this Board that as I'm following them by ordinance, as I'm following them by Illinois State Code, they are rubbing people the wrong way, and I regret that, I can understand it. But that does not relieve me of my responsibility to make sure that it's done by the Board. And I am not going to TBA from it. You want me to TBA from it, you're looking at the wrong guy who's sitting in this chair.
I'm not asking you to TBA from it. In fact, the Board are the people, the Board are the people that are involved.
No, what you have...
I think the good thing is we wear too many hats at once. It destroys the system of checks and balances in our village. When we put too many hats on one person, who now is everything from Village Administrator to Village President to apparently licensed inspector. I mean, there's just too much going on, and the village isn't hearing about any of it until well after the fact. I mean, things are being done unilaterally, and in my opinion, should, Jeff, all of these people are unilaterally. That things are being done unilaterally without the Board's knowledge that rightfully should be brought before the Board for discussion. And you're answering for the Board, for planning and zoning, for, I mean, you're answering for everybody we don't find out about until after the fact. And that's just symptomatic of the breakdown of the system of checks and balances when the village president and the village members are treated the same way.
Okay, I, I'd say an exaggerated, wildly exaggerated assessment of the situation. However, I appreciate your, your, telling me what you think. Kathleen, your, your assessment of the needs for the leadership in this community for the role that, excuse me, that we're talking about could not be more spot on. And I absolutely one hundred percent agree with you. Now, when it was made aware to me that I was going to have to fill in by proxy, if you will, for the village administrator's spot, simply because the individual that would have been able to do that relinquished any interest, it was not all of a sudden, well, now I got to figure out what to do. The process of the recruitment that I had already put in place was well on its way. And so, for the few days that I ended up, it was all last week, that I had to fill in for that, was not unprecedented. And, and, and as far as I'm concerned, I was, I was happy to do it. I mean, this was a role that my neighbors and that the people in this town needed to be done. And I would have absolutely did do it, and I would do it again. This is my community, I've been in this town for forty-five years, and I've been on the Board for fourteen years. And anybody who does it, I tip my hat to because as we all know, this is a volunteer game. And so, I am, I am not leading this town astray. And it really troubles me and it disappoints me when people on the Board or otherwise suggest that that's what I'm doing. If, if it's not going according to plan and the steps along the way, we hit a bump or two, you know what, this is new chart, new territory that we're trying to chart here. And I'm not going to apologize for it, I'm going to learn from it. And I'm going to, the next time it comes around, I'll know better how to handle when this type of thing comes about. But if you think I got all of the answers and if you think I've got all of the knowledge necessary to do this, you're wrong. Now, all I'm asking for, all I'm asking for... All I'm asking for is a little bit of patience on the part of the Board. I've been sending out emails to let you know exactly where we stand. I have received a number of resumes from candidates, viable candidates that can hold on to the wheel while we still continue to look for a candidate that I can appoint to bring to you for your advice and consent. That's the process I'm going to follow. Is it going to happen overnight? No. Should it? No. But trust me, it's happening and it's going to happen to the betterment of this village. I won't allow it to result in anything less. I mean, I got a stake in this, I got a home, I got a family, I'm in this... Exactly, and that's my concern, Kathleen. It's my concern that what we do in this Board, what we do for this town, is for the betterment of all of us. Are there going to be some that are going to be rankled in the process? Absolutely, I'm sorry that happens, that, that happens. But, you know, Lincoln said, "You're not going to make everybody happy all the time." So, all I'm asking you for is a little bit of bewig, just a little bit of latitude, if you will, to be able to get the process done. This is, this is new to me, and I'm going to continue on in this fashion for at least the next four years.
So, the fashion we continue on is basically excluding the Board from any decision-making, torturing the process.
That's not true, Scott.
We're not, we're not, you know, we don't have a discussion. We get dictated to what you've done and, you know, it's like, oh, that's what I'm going to do.
I'm keeping you involved in the status of where you're at, Scott, and it really, and you're... One of the things that bothers me most about your input is the way that you frame the situation to, to go on the attack and, and show the rest of the village that my interest in this is something other than civic pride and duty. And, you know, as I say, if there was business interest here, if this was a position that was paying hundreds of thousands of dollars, your argument may have a little bit of weight, but it doesn't. And it really, really upsets me when you start to question my character and my motivations when they're one hundred percent selfless. I'm sorry if they're not going according to plan, and they're never going to. But all I'm telling you is that I'm not going to allow the village of East County to be placed at any sort of jeopardy or risk due to somebody else's actions.
Hey, what I would say, Jeff, is there's people up here that have been elected to provide assistance and consult here, and you've excluded us in favor of five people that weren't elected sitting in a coffee shop.
Okay.
They're the ones that you should be in there. They don't know what's going on in this village, so we do. And that's not the way it's supposed to work.
Okay. Well, that, that's just not true either. And all we can do is agree to disagree, and I hate that phrase because it gets us nowhere.
Jeff, I'd like to go on to, and I'm sure everybody in the public can see this. I know I've been a little quiet on the Board, I'm the new guy, I'll be pointing to you whatever. Say what you will. You can see by these meetings, you can see, go back and watch them, that there is also not been a willingness to work with the President. It goes back and forth. You can say that we can act as a team, the Lions as a team, and I can say that there is not a back and forth. So, as much as we want to appear that that's happening, it does not happen.
The line of trends appears to be on some of the things that I was making earlier. That's, that's a huge thing. I mean, we did get your emails and some things like, well, I don't know, that was just this weekend, that's the first time. So, I...
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
No, that is true.
I have received a single email since my first week until last, until even last week.
Something's wrong with either mine or, or, you know, email.
I love to have a printed copy of all the ones that you send me. So, that I can read them.
Okay, well, if, if, if that's the case, and I, I can't say that it isn't, all I can do is take it under advisement, thank you for the attention, and, and bringing it to my attention. And I will make every effort necessary to increase and include everybody in it. All I do is click Village Board, and I'm assuming that it's going to everybody. It's a distribution list. So, but what I will do is, is if I have to, and I have no problem doing this, is sending out either daily or multiple emails every day to tell you exactly where this village is at, the status with each one of the department heads, and where we are in the process of being able to replace Jennifer Johnson.
Jeff, your staff already knows about you.
Absolutely.
And, and, and that had, and...
And we've had meetings on that.
That's not necessary.
And, okay.
Have we concluded this discussion or decided?
I, I don't know, would anybody else carry way in?
I would only say that, I mean, we're talking about, in a way, two different things. The Board is frustrated with unilateral actions. We only have to look so far as the consent of an agenda item B, which unilaterally changed the motion without having the authority to do so, to understand what we're talking about.
Well, the authority to do so is questionable. The other, the other item I would like to add in there is that, right from the start, the Village Board and my relationship with them has continually pointed out that there's been eight or nine weeks, nine weeks, ten weeks, whatever. After the election April sixth, the communication came to me on a daily basis, and we have an executive session every week, to insist that I give some sort of direction with regard to the village administrator's contract, at which point I was not able to do so. I wasn't even appointed, I wasn't even sworn in yet. So, we had an acting, we had Leo Miller, who was our mayor at the time, sitting in on these meetings, and it was like, wait a minute, guys, I don't get sworn in until May third. You're asking me on May seventh or April seventh what I plan to do.
It's called a transition.
Not only that, I get it, Scott. And not only that, though, but at that time, we didn't have a fully seated Board. Rich Triver, Justin Triver, was not on the Board at that time.
Which we did give you our full support of.
You did, once, once I had the nomination, and I appreciate that. But that's exactly my point. I bring about the nominations, I bring about the suggestions, and then the Board acts on them accordingly. But I, if I don't bring them in, in a, a fashion that is timely enough for you, I apologize. But you know what, I can only do what I can do. So, I'm going to continue to do this along the way, and I'm going to ask the Boards patience, and I'm going to get this one straightened out. We're going to have a village administrator who's going to take over. Because frankly, if anybody has any experience with village administration, it's a big task.
Stop discussion.
Well, the chair is allowed to complete its...
Thank you. All right, so there it is. As I was, as I was saying, to bring, and to circle back, as we all know, there is an investigation being initiated by the Illinois County Risk Management Trust. That's our insurance carrier for liability risk. And I feel it would be a prudent decision on part of the Board to wait till that investigation is completed before making a, a, a decision on the reinstatement of Jennifer. In addition to which, there is a lawsuit being pending or being initiated against us by that individual. So, what we would be talking about is bringing back an individual who is suing us and paying her a lot of money to do it. That logic escapes me. However, in addition to the Illinois Risk Management Trust, there is the Illinois City Managers Association, who is conducting an investigation into the ethics violations that were perpetrated by Jennifer and Brad and the actions that they took part in. And I think that as, as the village and her residents are paying for the membership dues and the fees associated with that membership, we ought to let these initi, these investigations play out. And that's all I'm suggesting. I need...
We're not obligated to investigate them on a fat basis.
Well, trust me, they do, because I've been contacted, I did initiate them, Scott, so...
Do you have the most handy words to say something? I recognize them.
No, they don't. It would be a chair...
This is a right place to say, I know that...
It's in the President's discretion, it's...
Please. Thank you, Kathleen. I originally did not, you know, I came here not having the intent to speak. I hate to call this, but I did not see this item on the agenda because when I did look at the agenda, Friday evening, it was Saturday morning, it wasn't on the agenda, so... But I'm here and listening to everything. You know, I know that I've spoken to a few of you this last week, and it's very difficult to see this, this town, it's a wonderful place, having seven Board members that, that got all of this in. It's, it's really frightening to watch. All I can say is please do some sort of team building. I don't know, I mean, I come from this poor experience, so I don't know. Some sort of team building for you guys because you know what, it's going to be pure hell for yours if you don't. And this, I see this town taking steps backwards. And, you know, for four years, if you can't make some sort of consensus agreement and working relationships, you know, it's also there. There should be no posturing going on either, if that's what's happening. It should stop, it's not productive. And my last comment on village administrator, however you vote, I can see, I think there's a lot of trustees up there that are very disappointed in the way it was handled without, you know, contacting, nobody knowing about it. That I get, you know, that's, but please vote with us for this town. Do you want how bringing an eighty-person back into this mess if people can't get along? Is that the right way to go? I don't know. But please just vote with us for the village, and not because you're upset or angry because you weren't, this wasn't communicated to you beforehand. So, thank you very much for letting me speak my mind, I appreciate it. And by the way, just so there's a note, I, I lived in this town for probably almost forty years. I'm like, I no longer live in this town, but I do own a property and business for the partner. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you all, you can do that as well?
I just, I would actually would just like to make one more comment that at no time did, when I made this decision to, to let Jennifer go, did I not know of the Board's position on it. They were absolutely clear.
That's the category.
That is a matter of...
Because you did not talk to anybody about this at all. The way that you can breathe your minds is ridiculous.
All you have to do is go through the minutes and, and I...
Things change, Jeff.
First of all, I would just suggest that none of us would come into that meeting with an empty soul in mind. We just wanted to have a conversation and figure out what was the best way to handle it.
And if, if it's just that, Scott, then it seems to me that that would be either a misstep or an item that would be easily gotten around. So, let's, let's, let's put that aside if we can, take some advice to go from here, prepare some of this, and, and move forward. We just had a huge shot in the arm. I mean, this is enormous. I mean, I don't, I...
For a project, we don't want to think about...
We know that, that the project is there, we know that the project is coming. But this is something that we can build on.
We?
Yes.
You know.
We don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know about it. Okay, but, but what we're talking about is that we're going to...
And thank you, thank you for all the work that you've done. Yes, but here again, this is another example.
Kathleen, you've gone wrong long enough. And you know what, that's a little disingenuous to suggest that you don't know about this project because you do. And the fact of the matter is that we, we have had hardly means in this town for the last four, seven years now, four or five years, I mean, anybody who comes into this town between the months of April and October knows, especially in the weekn, that the biggest issue is that...
This project has never come up on an agenda.
No, it hasn't.
So, is this just seed money to start a project?
Absolutely, and that's, we're going to, we're going to use it, and we're going to build it, we're going to plant that seed, and we're going to be able to get this done, and it's going to be a huge shot in the arm.
So, there's no defined project in place?
I'm sorry?
There's no, there's no actual defined project. This is just something that maybe you guys have talked about?
Well, it's a situation that is going to happen in the downtown. Now, anybody who's familiar with our downtown knows that there are very limited, and when I say limited, there's only two areas that could possibly accommodate a project like this. And we're going to go ahead and take it from there. What I'm going to do is going to be able to bring to the Board the next step and let's work together. So, as a matter of fact, I created a, a committee assignment, I created a new committee called Economic Opportunity, and this is going to be one of the opportunities that has come before the Board that we are all going to sit on because that committee is how, our chair, I shouldn't say chair, but it, it is made up of all the Board members, just like finances. And so, everyone is going to get a way in on this, and it's going to be, it's going to be a wonderful thing. Are all the details of this particular project...
So, you've got an idea, and now you've got money that the Board chooses.
Not only that, but we have every incentive to move forward with it, not just the need, but now we've got something to build on, there's a foundation here.
We're way outside of it.
I know, okay. So, I'm going to go ahead, and as I said, I've gone ahead, made my recommendations and known that we weigh on this, and the Board, Jennifer, Catherine, please take the role.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Coenzi?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Saviyan?
Yes.
And Trustee Triver?
Yep. There you have it. Okay. And I'm just going to say that I'm hoping that every one of you Board members are going to be able to withstand the slings and arrows that I'm anticipating that are coming your way when people in this town realize what you've decided. So, Item C, I'm going to guide you through the town. I'm glad you guys are here. Okay. This is just a household item. Actually, just to continue on with the appointment process that under ordinance I bound to continue for the appointment of the seat that's currently held by Scott and Andreessen. And all this is, is just a reminder to the board that this individual, no discussion necessary unless anybody would like to discuss it.
Well, I guess you remind the board about that. I guess I would remind you back that your duty to appoint a seat only occurs when there is actually a vacant seat. That's been a village's position, but there is not a vacant seat.
Okay, so then, thank you. Our next item would be D. If I could have a motion. I move to report contracts to Gobi Construction Inc. in the amount of $1,324,655.95 for Christina Drive and Illinois Route 72 Improvement Project and authorize the village president to execute the contract agreement.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this one? This one was, if you read through this, this was the signaling in that intersection there, Christina and 72, along with some improvements to the turn lane and so forth like that. The award, I believe, went, obviously went floating for $1,324,000. The state is coming in for $1,185,000. That's leaving $160,000 that we are going to be working with the developer to recover. And so essentially, the village is going to have this work done at that intersection, work over again soon. And assuming that we all vote in favor of it.
And all of the costs were already budgeted? That the village would have to? I'm pretty sure it was, it's been going on forever.
Yes.
Yeah, we're carried forward.
Actually Speedway is paying the cost. We will see 95% of the grant, only 3% upfront. Speedway is funding the difference and then Speedway has to redevelop their grant for 15 years. So it is in the budget, but it's a gap.
Right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, roll.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Trustee Consey?
Yes.
Trustee Burton?
Yes.
Trustee Savianna?
Yes.
And Trustee Triver?
Yes. That leads us to agenda item E. If I could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an IDOT resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code to spend $185,000 in motor fleet tax funds associated with the village's 2021 street improvement project and approve the estimated maintenance cost and maintenance engineering requirement.
Okay. Did you get seconded?
I'm sorry, mother's son.
Is there any questions or discussions on this one?
This is essentially asking, because we're on to what we promised. Does that have a resolution right now?
So did you have the opportunity to mention, this is over budget? But at the time, the budget workshop, the village board asked us to explore if there was additional work that should be done. And if we do this initial street, it decreases mobilization cost for future. So it is over budget, but you have significant capital funds we can cover. But I want to make sure that gets your attention. Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Trustee Consey?
Yes.
Trustee Burton?
Yes.
Trustee Savianna?
Yes.
And Trustee Triver?
Yes. Item F, if I could have a motion. I move to waive competitive bidding in board contracts to Xylem Water Solutions USA Inc. in the amount of $19,990 and $13,279 in Furo cents. Dame Mechanical Industries Inc. in the amount of $5,750 in Furo cents and Mon Electric Inc. in the amount of $6,005 for the Hill Street Livestation and Booting Project. So why are we foregoing the process? Can you bring my question on this?
Really, essentially, it's trusty good year. Because there's so many different components of the project, we talked to a contractor to, got the proposal from them to coordinate the entire project.
So you go right as a general contractor.
It's been to the other budget. So we thought if we could manage this ourselves, with this, with Joe Heinz, we could do it for, add it closer to what we budgeted for, so be able to successfully do that.
So are you saying that we did hire somebody to coordinate this and then we're not actually going to use?
No, no, we still listened to the proposal. The initial proposal was substantial, would have been substantial higher than $45,000. We thought we wanted to try to pull some house and see what we can do.
In addition to which, the actual completed project is made up of four separate bids for pieces that come under the fees that are in need to go off to bid.
Correct.
Cumulatively, it exceeds that $25,000 amount, but, so I understand that. But it's necessary, absolutely. With the Hill Street Livestation, this town is going to be significantly bigger. And so.
And quieter?
Yes, yes.
Well, it's important.
The largest component of it is the approximately $20,000 is the pump itself. The expensive pump that are coming from Sweden. So in effect, you obviously, so it'll take eight weeks-ish to for us to take delivery out of that. The balance of the project with parts and supplies and electric performance will also, the Jennifer model is inside the well itself.
Because competitive bidding is requested to be waived per your village code and state law, it cannot be approved if at least four of the six trustees voted in favor. The village president cannot vote on the waiver per state law. Is there anything else?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Trustee Consey?
Yes.
Trustee Burton?
Yes.
Trustee Savianna?
Yes.
And Trustee Triver?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, that would bring us to item G, if I could have a motion. I will move to approve an ordinance authorizing a multi-county municipality intergovernmental agreement between the village of East Dundee and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of greater Chicago.
One second.
Does anybody have any questions on this one?
Is this just more house?
No, well.
I'd like to understand the reason.
I read through it. I've got a couple of questions then for you, Chris. This one is, okay, you know, the little clip of land that we have that actually belongs to the county. So any development that would happen on Cook County's land, they have a say in as far as any water management. What they're, I think what they're doing correctly along is deferring to the King County Stormwater Management Ordinance that's better in place to dictate. However, if anything changes within the development of that, they want to be known or they want to be made aware, of course. And they, of course, reserve any and all rights that are associated with that piece of land to basically dissolve the deal. So my question though is, would this agreement that we put together with the multi-county municipality be only for that portion of land north of 72 and east of the border? Or would we be able to, in the event that we were annexing any land on the south side of 72, move this over? Or would that require a new agreement? And so I'm just kind of curious. We have to go through this again.
It does not indicate property.
Okay.
Current, I mean, they could, if we did something that they could maybe dissolve the agreement.
Right.
If we're doing something that they weren't aware of. But yes, it's not explicit to the Hilly Road properties in Cook County, but we only had those part of the area.
But I mean, just in the event that we were to annex a piece on the south side of 72 that was technically the county. It's not just about that. It would, so that your staff and engineer had to only apply the Stormwater Management Ordinance for evidence of which county the property located. And we just, of course, let them know of the added portion that may have been in that kind of stuff. Okay, great. Who initiated this? Who initiated this agreement or did they?
The owner of, the new owner of the Prairie property was looking to do a redevelopment agreement for the build site that he's working on. And they asked us to get the agreement going with them. So they had to deal with Cook County and the village. So they asked us to do that and it's, all the costs that we incurred are paid by their trusted agency agreement that they have with us. So the village attorney's fees are already going to be retro-sociated. This agreement was covered by their trusted agency. So it benefits the village, so we don't, you know, Joe Heinz can just use King County ordinance and it benefits the developer. So the need is enough to go with Cook County.
Any other discussion?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Trustee Consey?
Yes.
Trustee Burton?
Yes.
Trustee Savianna?
Yes.
And Trustee Triver?
Yes. All right, then, item E, this is not a motion really, but just a discussion to extend, so.
Let's talk about extending the completion date and the National Tool Drive extension. How about that?
Yeah, it's not a motion, but yes.
Which is a very.
Yeah. It started halfway, it should be discontinued. Yeah.
Which is a very, that they can't get their supplies in time, correct?
Yeah, and I know that the entrance is then altered not silver black, but landscape black. The wall that they're putting up, which I guess wasn't part of it. It's a change, had to do with whatever.
No, it wasn't a change. The supplier doesn't have the materials, so they can't get it to the site for another couple of weeks. So the category of this and the extension, so they don't get deemed extended today.
Oh, I see.
They only ask for a couple of weeks.
I would recommend maybe to the end of July. So we don't have to start here.
They have to July.
So the end of July, yeah.
You can say, I do.
Another example of the supply chain crippling that we're all experiencing now.
So this one, this one is higher role. So this, everybody who wants to, if you want, we have incentives that.
I'm July.
July 31st. Should be sufficient time for them to get their.
If there are formal approvals needed, then say I can bring back an agenda items if you're firm in it, extend the date.
It goes beyond that.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so then, item I, open that motion.
I'm going to approve a resolution approving agreement between the village of East Dundee, Illinois and Peter Casella and Company for accounting services.
Sorry. Does anybody have any questions on this one? So this is to, I mean, are we going to have somebody in? Bill to all of this or is this going to be like that? It actually could be both. We've done this in the past. And so basically, we're going to have somebody in who will be helping us with creation of work papers for the audit purposes and then general accounting services. My question on this one is that, as I've read through the letters from you itself, I'm not seeing any ceiling at the amount that we're spending. Now, I don't want to rip anybody out, but at $260,000 or $260 an hour, that's half a million dollars a year. That's a pretty good account.
That's all.
So and then at $100 an hour for the regular accounting, just for whatever day-to-day services that they're going to provide, that's nearly $200,000.
So I anticipate that we've been here every day. Our agreement right now, or verbally at least what we've talked about, is once or two days per day of the week. At least until we encounter a thought, this obviously not be around. And this is just until we find our permanent test integration, so.
Okay, well, but see, that leads me to question. If we're talking about bringing in a permanent replacement bridge man who is at an accountant level, bringing in a partner from this firm to do the work papers creation is something that is going to exceed?
The partner only oversees the work of Derek Thompson. So they're not actually performing the work. So they'll just review whatever work Derek does to ensure that the work here will write this quality of work. What I figured out or calculated based on the annual salary is that monthly, we pay him about $10,000 if you include his benefits and all of that. We can stay within that range so that there is continuity of services, but also we're staying within our budgeted amount of what we would have already been paying for each.
Right, and what I was thinking was maybe it wouldn't be too much work. Could we dig up the last two or three contracts? Because I know we've used them in the past when.
We've all been there.
Yeah, but I mean, it's like, I really had to see if we could, you know, a start date and an end date to kind of contain it and then a dollar limit to, you know, we'll be working up to that amount. Anything that exceeds it, I would like to see it come back and forward the board just to get a handle on it. And we can create that dollar limit, you know, based on an average over the last three years of what we've, you know, what we've used them for. And that kind of gives us an idea of where we should stand. But to not have anything is a little worrisome for me. Something because it's open-ended and, you know, likely exceed.
Well, I just want to mention, so you want me to present a start and end date? Is it fine if I just email it out to you guys?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And a cap for monthly amounts?
Well, not monthly necessarily, but the whole project. Because the work paper situation with the audit is, I mean, the audit is only at one portion of the year. So I'm thinking that we're going to need their services from, you know, July 1st to September 1st, whatever it is. Just kind of get an idea on that. And then it will be, you know, a building situation that would be up to a certain amount. And that kind of gives us an idea of where this meeting will be and we can use past averages of like, say, over the last two or three years of what we've experienced. And even, I don't want to say the added, yeah, you can go ahead and adjust it for another, if, 5% or whatever. Well, I'm ready to amend the motion to this.
Ready?
Well, yeah. I mean, this is my suggestion. If the board sees this as a worthwhile.
Is it, is it, is it probably kept some degree by the budget itself?
Well, perhaps, but we don't have that with the agreement with Peter Casella. And so I don't know if they've communicated that, you know what? We're going to start on Monday, we're going to end on Friday and it's only going to go up to, you know, $50,000 or whatever. I think it's important for them to know and for us that those parameters are in place. So this is just my suggestion.
If I could make a suggestion, timing is really the essence here. Operating without any confidence is not the situation we're being in in the audit. So maybe if we could amend the motion and then create that cap and then communicate that back to you. Rather than coming back here for additional approvals, then we can at least get somebody immediately to address our staffing problem.
Yeah, I think it's more about just that internal controls and their notification gets to where they're.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you amend your motion, I think you can just say, give Jeff the final approval on whatever that language is. Those amounts that you guys come up with, like, can you hear that?
Well, I would prefer to stay within budget of whatever issue we have across our. I think we should stay within the budgeted amount for that position rather than, I mean, what I'm afraid of is an arbitrary cap that isn't sufficient to complete our work. Because this work isn't really optional, it's necessary.
Right, if it doesn't exceed that, you know, it could. And we all recognize that it could. It's just that, you know, if we keep us informed, you know, if we do, begin to push up against any of those limits, it's just a mess, you know, that's all.
Okay, so I will amend my motion with the addition of add a start and end date and caps. and caps for each work, um, duty, the audits and the other duties, um, within the budgeted amount. Is that sound okay?
Sure.
All right.
We'll agree, just a second or something.
Well, did I get that in or Bridge here?
Also, I did too.
Got more, I'm gonna second. Uh, okay, anything else?
Trustee Maloney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Trustee Quincy?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Sadianna?
Yes.
And Trustee Trig?
Yes.
Item J, this one is a, I don't know.
Just taking side desk, we kind of decided about this discussion. We're painting the water tower. You have the floor.
Uh, we're gonna have a discussion, uh, and recommendation of paint colors for the elevated tank, the logos lever and associated with the Rock 25 water tower repainting and for the rehabilitation project. So, we have these three options here in our package.
Or a version of.
Or a version of. I like first one. I like the last one with the Eastundy, uh, but I, I like the wavy bottom of the first one. I like the versus together.
Sure. Well, uh, just a couple of quick comments. The, um, is on the marketing design help come up with these concepts. One of the, the paint manufacturers for, um, a water tower painting project, um, they have a 3D tool on their website. And so, I believe these, uh, Redwigs are, were using that, um, tool that is shown. It can help to plug in our logos and create that. So there's, you could truly create colors and designs all day long. So that came up as three concepts for us and, um, but certainly if there's a combination of what's here or something outside of this altogether, um, it's a long one to, or a consultant would like us to provide them with some guidance and direction as quickly as possible as they're finalizing the, um, the draft specifications.
I mean, personally, I have colors, I, I think they're neat. It is? I, you all know what my questions or points are gonna be on this. This is a $625,000 project to, it would be maintenance on the inside of the tower, the painting, uh, which is probably close to half that and, uh.
The inside as well.
Well, yeah, the inside has to be painted as well and, I mean, and there's maintenance that has to be done throughout. It's a pretty significant project. I guess what I would wonder is, well, it's really fun to see these pictures. Uh, how much is the cost adding to it for turning it into a tall ball sitting on a gigantic heap? And if we, all of these values will have the village name on it, I'm okay with that, I get it. Um, is, there are significant cost, uh, decrease to the black and white, um, rendering as opposed to just going to the teardrop green or, you know, that blue. Uh, and that would be my only question. I mean, I know it's boring, but if it's costing extra $100,000 with the anti-graffics, I would have to ask the, the board to consider the value.
It's my understanding that the only really additional cost, but that cost has been built into the $625,000. So that replaces the painting color, it's really just changing color, so it really wouldn't be an increase to, to colors. The logo would be the, the biggest change, if you will, within the $625,000. So if there's a small logo, if there's no lettering, that, I get, a consultant must weigh that good.
This is possible down, I doubt it.
Lettering, I'm not suggesting that, we don't have Eastundy on it. I'm just wondering if we've got the wrong logo that we, we just recently developed as opposed to just the lettering that says Eastundy. If putting on that wrong logo was to represent an extra, you know, 40 grand or whatever, I don't know. Um, I'm just.
Yeah.
Is it worth it to us?
I, I, um, I actually was leaning towards concept number three specifically because once you start getting into a huge logo like that, going on a multi-dimensional war paint surface, it has it, it, it makes it more complicated. This is gonna read easier. I, I work on this kind of stuff all the time and this is gonna be the least, you know.
Sort of.
Yes, exactly, exactly. And they have ways to do that, but it's still sometimes looks weird.
And if you change your brain and suddenly you got a normal water tower, that would have to be as large anymore.
I actually like, I'd say, concept three with the wavy line, right?
Yep. That's actually what I had written down.
And so, that's the point, if twenty years, and usually the paint, have, am I correct? You get a 25-year life out of the paint, is that how it normally works?
It can be upwards of that, over time it'll fade and, um.
Maybe it's one thing, but bleeding through as far as any work that has to be done from a rusty. I, I looked into it a bit and the metallic content of that paint is supposed to add, um, life of paint to, to, or stick around, if you will, last 25 years, which at that price, it ought, I mean, we don't lose that much, I don't know. So I guess.
This is, this has come before the board in many iterations ago, probably about 10 years ago, and we couldn't afford to do it.
Right.
So, we put off, this bird and bird and owl are finally in a position to be able to properly maintain it and probably make it up for the past since of not dealing with it sooner.
True enough, but then of course to Scott's point that, you know, if we go in and go fancy and you bet 15 years from now, we change the style of the tower, the logo, whatever, um, we then have to anticipate, you know, changing that prematurely and that's, could be considered, it's all.
I think that's one of the considerations for concept three, you know, it's just, it's clean, but it's one of those nice wavy lines.
We're not gonna change the name of the town.
Right. Then you've got a different problem.
I should also, also, I should also mention that the 68 tower was inspected back in 2018 as well. And at the time, it was in better conditions than the Rock 25 tower. But at some point, I would think probably in, I'm just guessing, five years-ish, we may be looking at a tower painting project there as well. Again, give or take, it's, it's hard to know, but, uh, in better condition, but at some point it will be a few minutes involved.
And the establishment date on the stem, I don't know if that's really gonna add visual, uh, immediately to stand out. I don't know, I would think of, I exposition, I agree.
I don't think you'll be able to see it either. I, I took the, I don't, I can't really, you know.
And I would also be afraid of it, um, as, as the paint fades, if you're painting it on top of the black, it's gonna start to turn gray. If we have to go set bottom on the practical, tell me if you're gonna. So the, yeah.
So, just so I mentioned, it sounds like the concept three logo on the bowl with the black stem and black lower portion of the bowl and then no, um, establishment date. Doesn't look like a wavy.
Don't forget the way. Particularly decent in law freedom, of course.
Yeah.
So, no logo, wavy. Lower stem.
Gotta get it right and fill.
Running this wrong.
Do not make this a commercial.
Could be on the right.
Why is it supposed to be a little?
President, I am also, I just, can I ask, so I'm assuming this will be on two sides? And will we come back to decide like which side? Cause that's actually a big deal, um, when you're driving, how it's facing. So are we gonna come back to that or, or shouldn't you just try to engineer for the best visibility and maybe?
Yeah, what I can do is probably a, a southwest and a northeast, basically maybe to get the program. If you're going north on 25, what are you gonna see? Well, if it's south or, you know, facing to the southwest, you, you, you're gonna know where you're, where you are.
We, we might be a good shape right now with this information and then we have time to figure out where on the bowl.
The orientation.
Cause they'll come to us at some point and say, okay, now that we know what you want, cause they'll take this and, and, and send it to their design folks to say, okay, this is the logo they want and then we'll give them some final direction. I think most of the project is exactly where. Now, is this size, work, so are we thinking two logos on the bowl and then on each side?
But then of course, how the distance around that, that those letters could, uh, you know, provide, there might be not a lot of distance between the next repainted town. So, you know, maybe it might be a 360 degree view, you know, at least in a sort of.
Be 70s to me.
Exactly.
But it's probably, yeah, you'll put it on opposite sides, you know, on the way, so it's, you know, it's a great recommendation.
Yep.
As a way for it to.
Yeah, at least the direction is what I'm saying, north-south, you know, or on an angle a bit, so. Okay, so that was just consensus item and then the last item, oh, I'm sorry, was there any other? I don't know. Uh, was committee assignments, take a look at these, you know, I just went based on where we were, um. You know, over the last few years, we really haven't had a whole lot of committee involvement. I'd like to see that, that change just a bit because, um, three trustees getting together to hammer out an, an issue can be effective and then when they bring back their ideas and their thoughts, uh, to the board, um, you know, it, it can really help because they've, they've done some of the heavy lifting. The only thing that I've always seen committee assignments, um, the thing we risk is government is really slowly as it is and so, uh, will this add to the, add to that? It can, but hopefully we'll be able to just kinda keep up on it. Um, and if you take a look, the one committee I can see that I mentioned earlier that I added was the economic opportunity committee. And I think this is important enough to all of us that we all take part, uh, kinda like what we do with finance. You know, and it's, um, there's an awful lot of, uh, of opportunity for, and specifically I think it's gonna relate to development. Um, you know, we're, we're a small town, but there's still a great deal and depending on what happens on, on, uh, along 72, there's gonna be, you know, additional development here, the cap or, um, plant, uh, or, you know, there's just, there's just all kinds of things that we, we can look to. Trustee Quincy has, has brought up, uh, an opportunity, um, and, uh, absolutely worthwhile story. And so, um, you know, and will have a, a big impact so we can get together and kind of hammer out some, I mean, everybody bring some ideas, if you will, and I'll go ahead and I, put me on the chair as that, I, you know, wasn't really sure how that was gonna go about, so I, I did that. And so I'll, I'm gonna go ahead and send out an email, uh, try and get together, have everybody, uh, let me know what, what date might work well. Uh, maybe on Monday that we're not having a meeting, we can kind of hammer out some ideas. So I'm gonna try and put together a list of, of every economic development opportunity or business opportunity that we have, piece of bank plan and that kind of thing. And, uh, we'll just make a, a whole laundry list of things and then, um, we can pick, choose some of the things that we think we'd like to pass to Trina, uh, and might be the biggest thing to happen. So, um, that's kinda how I'm thinking to approach it. But the other, uh, assignments, none of this is that much, so if, if one of you, I, I just had to kinda, you know, browse through ours here and just kind of put the assignments down. If there's, if there's a committee that Jeff's not wanna either chair or, um, you know, take part in or whatever, um, you know, feel free to contact somebody who might wanna trade off with you, just kind of let us know, like, how things are we gonna report. And, um, you know, we'll, we'll be there, you know, how to take these issues come up, uh, generally hopefully through the public's intervention. And then a lot of times it'll result in a, in a committee assignment, so we'll go ahead and do that.
Can I ask a movie question?
Sure.
Um, I was trying to, because I was trying to look up the committees that are on and I wasn't finding meeting notes really. And I know that we talked previously about maybe combining some of these and I was wondering if perhaps the ones that maybe didn't have meeting notes were just not.
Meeting pass notes?
Yeah, cause a lot of them, a lot of the, like, a lot of the committees do have meeting notes and agendas posted on website. And so, I was, like, I know that we brought up the possibility of combining some of these, looking at, you know, what they, what their goals are, what they're trying to accomplish, you know, what, I don't wanna chair a committee that I can't, so that's why I wanted.
It's really, I mean, yeah, I, when you, when you get into that, I was the same way, it was like went about streets, you know, when I first got on. And, and it really, um, it's just the issue probably that will come before the committee or take in the committee. This is something that you can all kinda hash out and, um, and tap into one of the department heads, Phil, Chris, Joe Hunt. You know, um, they, they've got a lot of knowledge on this kind of thing. And so if there's an issue that comes up that they might be able to help out with and even guide, um, you know, don't, don't hesitate cause they'll help out. But as far as chairing it, don't, don't get me twisted.
I was making sure we're a long timer.
You know what, I, I found that, that the chairing, the, the chairing of a committee, and every time I've ever done one has really just resulted in, that's the person who takes the notes.
Yeah.
You know, that's how it kinda leads up to, so, um, yeah, so don't, don't really, uh.
So do the bunnies combine the meetings or is that just kind of a topic for future discussion?
Um, yeah, we can, we can talk about it in a future time, you know, I don't wanna.
Talk about it in the next economic opportunity.
Yeah, and, yeah, exactly, we can do that then because, uh, yeah.
It would be a, a code event that would be the result of any agreement on how to reshuffle these.
It, it happens to be, they're all kind of laid out based on the requirements too, so. These are the ones, so if we eliminate one, uh, we have to obviously document. So, and that leads us to financial reports, the answer list, or if you pack it, uh, go through it. Uh, any questions, you know, and this is the one. Uh, we'll go to village reports, or, no, report, um, board report. I'll, I'll start out, um, I just, I would like to just say that, uh, based on all the strength that we, um, experienced over the last couple of weeks, that none of this is, this are honorable. We're gonna get through this, you know, and, uh, it's, it's really just, really important to me that everybody, resident or whoever, understands my position on all of this is for the betterment of the town. There is, I'm never gonna do anything and I wouldn't do it because, I mean, I'm dedicating and we're all, you know, donating our time, but I, I'm never going to do anything that I do not firmly believe is in the best interest of the village. Whether that be, you know, an economic development, uh, whether that be the creation of a tip, whether that be an appointment of a, of a board member or, uh, you know, a commission member, we have several, um, and, and I need to look to that because there's gonna be some, some changes that will have to take place due to people who are retiring or resigning or aging and can't continue to, to fill in the, the roles. But please know that this, I do not want to reinforce an us-them type of situation. I, 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 it just is not conducive to the direction of the town, the reputation of the town or the betterment of our people. And I'm just, I'm not going to take part in that, but I am going to follow ordinance. And one thing that I've noticed, um, over my years on the board is that we have a lot of ordinances in this town that, um, for whatever reason, when the situations come up, sometimes we don't adhere to them. And that's always bothered me, there's no point having an ordinance that you're not gonna follow. If you don't wanna follow it, that's fine, the board has the power to either repeal it or amend it, do whatever. But if it's in place, it's in place for a reason and so that's really kinda how I'm gonna approach this. And, um, and, and like I say, I, I don't want that to rankle anybody or any feathers, but if it does, and just, let's have a conversation about it because it's not, as I say, none of this is gonna be insubstantial, we can get around this. And so, um, let's, let's work together. We bring this, um, we can bring some really, really, really good changes to the village and here's the start and this is gonna be exciting stuff. So, um. So, um, patience and, um, teamwork, we'll get there. So, Trusty Britton, let me start.
No, of course.
Or Trusty Andreessen?
No, of course.
Trusty Mahoney?
Let's all get out of here, but it's on a water Monday.
It's, it's, you know, you got at least another hour, maybe hour, four days.
Jeff, I, I, this has been stressful for everybody, and we do want to make this, we do want to get past this and find that mutual trust, understanding, transparency, collaboration. Um, amongst everyone on the team, and, um, and, and that goes for, for everyone on the team, okay?
Great, thank you. Trusty Good?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I will say that I, I absolutely feel as though, um, we should be working together. I don't think there should be a team lineup or a team board, I think it should be team Eastundy and, uh, I understand.
Trusty Tryber?
I completely agree with that. Uh, I was sent an email by a president who could not make it tonight, and I know that a lot has transpired during the last hour and thirty-one minutes. Uh, so I will read this for them, uh, it's sent in from Roof Dallas. Um, and it's addressed to the Eastundy Village President and Village Board, uh, referring to the last village meeting of June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. President Jeff Lyon was prepared to talk to Y Keith Smith, Jennifer Johnson, the former village administrator. He was blocked from telling us the residents of Eastundy by a motion by Scott Andreessen. Scott motion for Jeff to communicate in a closed session. The motion was granted, I couldn't believe it. Today's village meeting agenda is site for storing Jennifer Johnson. Hold on, I'm still waiting to hear the reasons for dismissal, why aren't we being told, and it makes me very suspicious. I think the residents deserve to know and to be properly informed, please provide the reasons, thank you. So I just wanted to make sure that I read that as I was asked, but obviously a lot has transpired since that was, so.
Great, is there anything else? Oh, no. Trusty, so let's get out of here.
Uh, yeah, no, of course.
Okay. Brice?
No.
Chris?
No, of course.
Jennifer?
Um, I just want to, I did want to note that Mother Mondays was going on, and just another thank you to Lucy Dlap, who runs this entire thing for us. Um, voluntarily does such a great job. Um, and almost more exciting is Thursday Thursdays this Thursday, so, um, don't forget that, um, and we're just hoping for good luck, thank you.
Which we may not get, so, into that, and so just be prepared. Chief?
No, of course.
Bill?
Just a quick mention, last night it's so storm, we received close to two inches of rain in a very short period of time, we needed.
Twenty more now.
What's that?
Twenty more now.
We needed, but not quite that level of intensity. Hopefully we'll need some more rain in the coming days, weeks, and more, um, Florida, really, there is. Somebody's to show us, no, of course, yeah.
Jennifer? Great, okay, thank you. Okay, all right, um, executive sess, oh, I'm sorry, staff report, should we first, um, and, um, we've got public comments on non-agenda items regarding. Is anybody out in the audience who'd like to adjust the board one more time or at all on a non-agenda item or anything? Okay, see none, then executive session, uh, are we going into one? I would like to, if we could, discuss one item, so.
Sure.
All right, that would be one, so, which we. Just a quick. First item.
How do we go in our executive session, uh, close to the public and media under provisions of Illinois Urban Media Act, by ILCS one twenty slash two, C twenty-one. Uh, those are personnel discussion, uh, with adjournments afterwards and not returning to regular session.
We no further, uh, item would be discussed, right, the twenty, your executive session? It should take five minutes. If it was two C ones, correct, and I just said two C twenty and twenty-three?
Two C ones.
Two C twenty-one. It's what's, listen, I could be listening wrong now, the discussion minutes is two C twenty-one, two.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you are correct, C one, C one. I, thank you.
I'm the second one, it's got the motion, yes.
Jennifer?
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Andreessen?
Yes.
Trusty Quincy?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Sagniano?
Yes.
Trusty Tryber?
Yes.
And President Ryan.
Yes. Thank you all for coming tonight, we don't have as long, but.
Sorry.